The invocation of the pledge, have a call, approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from July twenty-third meeting?
Again.
But we don't have any presentations. So consent. Okay?
Thank you. The first one I have for you is the initiation of text amendments for the Columbia County Code. Chapter ninety-one eighty states that if we're going to amend chapter ninety, either the Board of Commissioners or the Planning Commission must initiate that process. Staff has been working with internally as well with some of the development community about some changes they'd like to see to the code. However, in order to do that for chapter ninety initiated, the next step will be have a public hearing about the changes. After that, it would then come back to this board for another vote to whether or not you want to actually implement the changes. So this time we have not written the changes. Because if you tell us no, you're not going to initiate it. There's no sense in us writing them. Have ideas of things we want to change. Processes, you initiate, public hearing, then vote. If that makes sense. So we've got things we want to look at such as slopes, buffers. We're also looking outside of chapters seventy-four and ninety. Chapter thirty-four as well. We've also had some concerns for other commissioners about some maintenance issues on properties. So we'll look at that as well. We've got issues about vehicles that we need to look at as well. So there's a lot of stuff that we've been asked to look at. Here we do it all at one time, bring it all to you. So you see a big complete package. But at this time, we have not made any written changes to chapter ninety or chapter seventy-four. If you do bless this, we will start that process.
A public hearing would be part of this committee?
No ma'am, it would actually be in the planning commission. So y'all would, y'all would initiate. Mr. Sterling would then have between fifteen and forty-five days to actually hold the public hearing. That would be at the planning commission. They would then make a recommendation to the full commission. At that point, the full commission would then take, decide whether or not you were going to take action.
And you have, you have not started writing it yet.
We've started in chapter thirty-four, but chapter thirty-four does not require this initiation. In order for us to amend chapter thirty-four, we need to amend chapter ninety because they reference each other. So if we're going to change thirty-four, we need to change ninety, we need to change seventy-four. So before we go further with chapter thirty-four, we need to figure out if you're going to let us change chapter ninety. So it's really just. This is y'all telling us that you want us to consider amending the code. It's not approving it, it's just saying staff start the process of considering it or letting us, letting you consider it.
So the development community is involved?
Oh, yes.
Yes, let me, just to, just to piggyback on that. So I believe the board knows, but we'll make everybody aware that, that we've stood up a county manager's development advisory board that consists of builders from different parts of the industries. We have commercial builders, we have residential builders, large builders, track builders. I mean, so we have a, 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 a good group of those folks. Mr. Stocker sits on that, Commissioner Couch sits on that. Also Commissioner Caraway sits on that advisory board, Mr. Scarborough, we have real estate agents. So we've got some really good ideas that are coming out of that think tank. So those will be presented back to the board as, to see if it's something that you want to move forward with or not.
Move to consent.
Second.
Morning.
Morning.
First item I have for your consideration this morning is a request to purchase a remote controlled mower. This is to help out our easement crews. We have some areas where the slopes are steep. So there's operator safety concerns in that. And also really, you know, we have so many miles of sewer easement and waterline easement to cut, it's difficult to get to all of it. So sometimes it can be grown up, it can be snaky, it can be nasty. We can send this in ahead of our guys to kind of clear stuff out just to protect them and keep them safe as they're cutting. This is a budgeted item. We are under budget on this item. We budgeted four hundred fifteen thousand. The expense for this item will be a hundred and twelve, seven thirty-four. And staff recommends the purchase of the Green climber remote control mower.
These do we already have?
We have one. Uh, we have.
Control, I mean, we. Rosen Bridges has one, Stormwater has one, but keep in mind, these are all enterprise funds. We're not allowed to share funds between those.
Can't share equipment?
We can, but we have to, there's a cost associated with that because of the enterprise fund. But we would, we could, we'd do it, but we'd have to charge it back. It becomes an accounting issue. Now we purchased at least one or two.
Like I said, Stormwater has one for the same issues. When you get on these steep slopes, it's dangerous. Rosen Bridges has them for cleaning ponds, cleaning right away. Found that our guys are wanting to do the job. They get out there and they put those tractors in positions they shouldn't and we end up damaging our equipment. Bought these, uh, remote controlled climbers, green climbers, and put those on slopes that are extremely steep without putting a man on it, without putting a load on it, without putting a tractor on it. We're, we're doing a lot less damage to our equipment. We're not hurting our people. Huge safety benefit to have these versus having a tractor out there. And it, it actually sped up production faster.
But we have two though, we'll have two.
Have, this will be probably number four. Rosen Bridges has one, Stormwater has one.
And I have one now.
Already, but we.
This will be your second one?
Yes, yes, sir. We have two crews that go out and cut independently of each other. And so now we'll have one per crew.
Darren, you mentioned some sort of efficiency, manpower, do you?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. So with the remote control ones, I, I'll speak from the Stormwater Rosen Bridges side. Yesterday I saw one man on Riverwatch by himself cutting these major slopes. In the past, we'd have to send a tractor on the, on a truck with multiple people in the truck, unload the tractor, do all the stuff, load the tractor back up. Now one man goes out there with his regular pickup in a trailer versus a tractor trailer. Equipment, if we were to buy a slope mower, we'd probably spend probably three or four hundred thousand. Nick still here? What, what did that slope mower cost us? Two hundred and thirty-four thousand, this is half the cost of buying the slope mowers. Nick's not repairing those slope mowers like we were in the past. We were spending bukus of money repairing our slope mowers. We were constantly breaking them. Whereas these is a small machine on tracks, big flail head, I guess you get the flail head, I'm assuming. Flail head on the front, so it cuts through brush, it cuts through small trees. Really saves us a lot of time. They save us tons of overturns. We've overturned tractors a lot. They get them on those slopes and roll them over. We have to stand them back up, drain the oil, drain the transmission fluid, open up the engine, let it, oil get out of it so we don't have a compression, blow the block open. Y'all have all been there, I'm sure. Rolled the tractor. It's been a big savings. Nick, if you want to speak to it anymore. We'll let you. You, you name the day, we'll put you to work.
Somebody record that.
By the day. A few minutes.
Move to consent.
Second.
The move.
Right. The next item we have requesting is the purchase of a new CCTV system. We have two systems now. One we use for our subdivision inspection. So anytime we have a new subdivision, there's a smaller van that goes out and it inspects all the new pipes and, and verifies that it meets our standards. And, and then we have one that we use on a bigger van. This is kind of troubleshooting, everyday maintenance, looking at our system. So this is going to replace, going to be our new troubleshooting. It'll go in the bigger van. I mean, we'll get rid of our old, what's called a Q's system. This is twelve years old. It's just, it's starting to break a lot.
Sell it?
Have a lot of problems, a lot of, it's out for maintenance a lot now.
Are we able to sell it?
Um, we're going to try to sell it, yes, sir. But we're going to try to surplus this. It's, it's in rough shape. It's, it's pretty old. I, you know, I mean, twelve years is, is pretty old with camera equipment. But the new system will be high definition so we can see the lines better, see cracks in pipes, damage to pipes much easier than we can with our existing system. We'll take the old six-year-old I-Box system that we use for troubleshooting and maintenance now and move it over and it'll be our new subdivision camera. So part of this cost is swapping them within the existing vans we have. So installing a new one in our big box van, installing the old one that we're going to keep into the Nissan smaller van for our subdivisions. We are within budget on this. We budgeted two hundred ninety thousand. This is two eighty-six, four fifty-three, seventy-six. And staff recommends approval of the purchase.
Include training for it?
Yes, there's, there's thirty-five hundred dollars in training, which will do two, three days worth of training on this equipment. We, we do have an existing I-Box system. It's just not quite as up to date as this one. So we're very familiar with it. So I think the training should go pretty smoothly.
Second.
I have one more item. Yes, sir. The last item I have for you is a change order, number one, for Ronald Reagan sewer. We replaced the sewer line just right outside this building. And we are finalizing that project, but we did have some cost overruns and a couple line items. We had some bad materials in the dirt. It was just mushy, sloshy material where we couldn't compact and embed our pipe in. So we had to have all that removed, bring in new materials. The extra digging caused us to have to replace a little more asphalt. And we got into a crosswalk area over in front of Zaxby's where we had to replace the crosswalk that we didn't expect. So we had some cost on that. The total cost of the overruns was thirty-two thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and ten cent. And this will finalize the project and close it out if this is approved and staff recommends approval.
Second.
Morning.
Morning.
The first item we have for you is a bid and contract with ER Snell for the twenty-twenty-four LRA resurfacing. Governor Kemp and the legislature issued two hundred and fifty million in local road assistance funds in the amended fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget. Columbia County's portion of that was two million, two hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-six cents with no match required. Be eligible for a LRA project that has to meet, uh, has to mirror that of an L-MIG project, their local maintenance improvement grants. So this is basically additional L-MIG funding. We advertised this project out and received bids and ER Snell was the lowest bidder at one million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred dollars and fifty cent because it came in low. Uh, we have to, uh, spend all the funds in order to meet the grant requirements. So we're asking with the approval of this contract for the board to allow us to extend the roads beyond the original limits as we held it just to the most degraded portions originally. So if we need to go a little bit further, we can do that. And there's two additional roads in Bartram. Those are Seminole Circle and Sunberry Drive, Sunberry Loop. We would like to do those as well, if acceptable to the board, to make sure we use the full funding amount. Staff recommends approval.
How do you choose the roads?
Several methods. So we maintain a list. So when a homeowner resident calls in and asks us to look at their road, we look at the road. If it, if it needs to be resurfaced, we add it to a list. We also in twenty-twenty-one did a countywide roadway evaluation. And then of course, if staff sees roads when they're out working and they inform us of those on the list. So whenever we receive L-MIG funding or in this case LRA funding, we go through that list. And we basically do which roads are going to provide the most impact to the public good. So it may be a road that's in the worst shape, but it only has three houses on it, may not make the top of the list. Road in really bad shape and it's serving, you know, ten houses and a church, that's going to be closer to the top of the list.
How often do we do the countywide roadway evaluation?
In my time, we've only done it once, but we'd like to do it every three to five years. So it's getting about time to do it again. Part of. The evaluation? So we advertise for, or we request proposals from consultants to do that. And I think our last one was SNME, did the countywide payment program. They developed a, a grading system. We worked with them on that and they, we, we worked with GIs heavily and developed the GIs platform. We can go in and navigate that.
Second.
This next item is a supplemental agreement, number one, with GDOT for TIA two, group three resurfacing. The Board of Commissioners has already approved the original agreement. Uh, staff advertised this package of roads out for bids and we received bids on it, which came in over budget collectively, over nine hundred thousand over budget. Uh, the board approved us to move forward with entering into a contract with Reeves Construction on July second. Contention on us reconciling budget differences with the Tia Office. Staff has done that. Uh, staff has received approval for the additional nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, and this is simply the, uh, supplemental agreement with GDOT showing that adjustment. Staff recommends approval.
Cause these are the, these are the roads that we put in the package.
It's, it's the same roads. They just came in over and under budget. We had to reconcile that with the office to make sure that when we contracted this with Reeves, that we got reimbursed for the funds.
Right. Have to, yeah, they have to pay for it. And?
Second.
This next item is the grade crossing agreement with CSX for the Harding-McManus Road Widening Project. Last month, we brought before this same committee, a construction agreement. We thought that that was the last piece of the puzzle with CSX for Harding-McManus. It was not. Uh, they have since contacted us and told us that we needed to execute the maintenance agreement with them as well. Since we're, we're put in front of the county attorney, county management's reviewing it as well. But we're working through that process. We, 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 we're not sure how much leverage we have and making any changes with that. But we're going to continue working with that, make sure we're doing everything we can. Uh, but this is the final piece of the puzzle from our understanding. Staff recommends approving this, contingent on county management and the county attorney approving the final agreement.
Move to consent.
Chris, I was working with CSX. Do you have any room?
Our, our, our road is crossing their right of way. So we're kind of at their mercy. As we've experienced in the past, as driver just explained, but the, a pretty hard written agreement. They can come in and make repairs to their tracks and send us the bill and we have to pay it. Don't pay it, they come in and shut our road down. Pretty ironclad. So currently we have to pay for maintenance to other crossings as well. I don't think it's quite as harsh as this agreement, but want to cross their tracks, we got to play by their rules.
Second.
This next item is for the purchase of C-three BU materials for the Harding-McManus Road Widening Project. Uh, we would like to go ahead and purchase materials from several different vendors with a budget not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand for the materials listed below. What we're trying to do is advance this project as much as we can. Uh, this is, uh, we were quoted with a two to five week lead time. Once we make the purchase, of course, that could turn into five months, but anything we can do to advance the project, the construction schedule, I think is going to be very appreciated by the folks that use that road. Like to go ahead and make these purchases and get this rolling. Staff recommends.
Consent.
Second.
The next item is a contract with Infrastructure Consulting and Engineering to allow construction engineering inspection services on all road construction projects. We currently have an agreement with ICE for CEI, Construction Engineering Inspection Services on TIA projects only. Currently, we have, um, six projects in construction now. Three of those projects are going through the final punchless phase, not a lot going on. However, we have thirteen contracts. We know they're coming up for the next year that we need support on. As we only have five roadway inspectors, we're trying to supplement those roadway inspectors as we can with subdivision inspectors. Uh, but those individuals are not fully trained yet to do this. We would like to expand ICE's services to help us on additional roads, to make sure we have bodies present when we need inspections done. Goal would be to make sure that any project that ICE inspectors are working on are paid through the fund that's funding the project. So if it's a TIA project, the ICE inspectors pay. SLOSS project, the ICE inspectors pay SLOSS. Um, so that's the goal. And we're going to try to work staff around as much as we can and utilize additional staff where we can. Uh, but we, we need this in order to make sure we're delivering these roads to contract specifications. Staff recommends approval.
Say that you have staff that you're training to do this, that they won't be ready in time?
So we have subdivision inspectors. Uh, we have four subdivision inspectors that inspect private developed roads that we expect to be needed to the county. So we want to make sure they're built to our specifications. Um, whenever those inspectors have their workload ebbs and flows, we try to keep them busy and cross train them on the heavy highway stuff. And these rates, uh, won't change from the current TIA contract until April eighteenth. I think it's when the current contract runs out in which we would have to negotiate rates and bring any changes to.
Second.
This next item is an independent contractor agreement with Clean and Green Environmental Property Solutions Group for Abatement and Demolition of Tax Parcel zero seven seven one one nine for the Fury Street Road Widening Project. Parcel that the board recently acquired, uh, and we need to demolish it. The contract for the abatement and demolition is twenty-eight thousand. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Okay.
This next item is an independent contractor agreement with W and A Engineering for the Appling Sidewalk Improvement Project. Uh, W and A is currently working on the roundabout at White Oak Road and Ray Owens Road, sorry, went blank. They're currently working on that. It's a twenty-three, twenty-eight SLOSS project, the roundabout is. Um, we see the need to add, extend the current sidewalk being designed at the roundabout because it's sidewalk to nowhere if we don't. But we would like to extend it past the church down to south, down to the city limits of Appling, uh, to connect to the system there as well as connect it over to the park. Um, so staff reached out to W and A and asked for a proposal to do the survey and design to add some connectivity with the, the frame walkways. To kind of coincide with the roundabout project. They provided a proposal for thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Staff recommends approval.
Second.
The next item is an independent contractor agreement with McGill and Associates to perform survey for the Wilkins Road Improvement Project. This is a dirt road off of Wright'sboro Road. Heads north, uh, and eventually connects to county property just south of the interstate. We would like to go ahead and survey this road and start the design process so that, uh, we can get this road paved and hopefully at some point it will serve the, the land the county owns just south of the interstate there. So this is just to start the process. We, we expect at this time, project complete would cost about one point eight million dollars, but we're only asking for seven thousand, three hundred now to get the survey started. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
This next item is an independent contractor agreement with McGill and Associates to perform survey for the Beehive, Beehive Drive Improvement Project. We've had residents, uh, reach out to us and request we pave, the county pave Beehive Drive. Beehive Drive is off of Mistletoe Road. Uh, it serves, I think, eight parcels, if I remember correctly. Uh, there's not a tremendous out, a tremendous amount out there, uh, but we did feel the need to bring this to you and, and get your approval to move forward with it if it was fire. Um, so this would be, uh, just to start the, the, the survey process, um, for three thousand, four hundred dollars. We expect if board decided they wanted to have this road paved, it would cost a total of about eight hundred and thirty thousand.
Will it come back before this board to vote on that money?
Would. This is only for three thousand, four hundred dollars for the survey, start the process.
Essentially leveraging back to what you said earlier, how many parcels are on a piece of property?
And that's why we wanted your approval.
Why would we spend a hundred grand?
We've had, we've had residents reach out to us and we wanted your blessing before we moved out on it.
I have it.
Second, second with understanding that thirty-four hundred bucks and we'll still discuss.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Uh, the next item is an amendment to the procedure for residential street light districts and intersection safety lighting. Uh, the current procedure was adopted on September fifth of last year. Uh, since this adoption, uh, we've had power providers reach out to us regarding some criteria in there uh, that they think is too tight and or doesn't necessarily align with their ability or previously installed streetlight districts. As well as we've had some gray areas that we would like to clear up with builders, developers, um, to, or that they know that they're not individual property owners, nor can they apply as individual property owners if they're, um, buying several lots to sell. Um, so they can't get the exemption to not install streetlights initially, uh, as required by this board. And then, uh, modifying the application deadline from May to April so that we can make sure that we get any approved streetlight districts to the tax assessor's office uh, in time for them to start the tax season. Any questions? I know that's a lot. Staff recommends.
He'll read. The Reader's Digest version of this.
Sure. So one is to better align the requirements, um, the spacing and the, the lighting requirements with power providers and operating procedures and what's already installed throughout the county. Put together a criteria in the original one based on consultant's recommendations and not necessarily what the power providers provide. Um, so that's one thing, more technical. The other is to clarify that builders are not individual lot owners. So if I'm a builder and I have five lots, I'm not an individual lot, lot owner. The current policy says that if you're an individual lot owner, you don't have to install streetlights. You have to petition.
Panel that a little bit, so.
Sure.
Current policy says if, if the developer owns more than fifty percent of the neighborhood, they are required to pay for the install the lights. So what the developers are doing now is they're not going, they're not doing that until they sell the lots to the builders. At that point, they say, well, the builder's on fifty-one percent, I own forty-nine percent, I'm off the hook. Y'all go build. So the neighborhood has not been developed yet. It has not been built. However, they're, they're using our loophole to get out of having to pay for the streetlights and then asking streetlight district that the county controls to pay for it. So this is just clarifying that developer sells the lots to the builders. It's still a new development. They are still on the hook to pay for the streetlights as the policy.
If the neighborhood wanted streetlights?
If they want them, right. Now, the policy does state the new streetlights, I'm sorry, the new developments that are approved after this policy went into effect, they are required to install streetlights. But they have a lot of developments that are out there being constructed that were approved prior to this policy. That's where they're coming in and saying, if we've already sold fifty-one percent of the lots to the builders, therefore you can't make us pay for it.
This is a code change?
This, this is streetlight policy change.
It's required except for, uh, RA, R-one, and R-one A zoning. Every other zoning district, current procedure requires streetlights are installed with the government of the neighborhood.
RA won't be required.
Developer already, lights have already wired, ready for this, right?
Sometimes it is, sometimes it's not. It's just, it depends on Georgia Power and the developer. If the developer works with Georgia Power early on, then yes, it's prepared and it's ready to go. However, sometimes streetlights are an afterthought. In the past, it, it was let the county handle it once we get out of here and then we were, we were having a pretty good bill. Georgia Power recently came to us and said, we have been severely undercharging you. Streetlights expect increases.
Based on my power bill this past month, I disagree, but keep going.
The increase was about five hundred percent. The increase was about five hundred percent. We wrote our new policy based on the what we were paying, looking at our streetlight fund balance, we were able to show that we were going to keep that fund balance healthy. Bill pay the bills, right? I would say within two months of this policy going into effect, Georgia Power decked the rates through the roof. I understand the builders were caught. They they weren't expecting. They've already been to the bank. They've already had their numbers in their hand. They knew what it was going to cost to build their neighborhood. And all of a sudden, Georgia Power just jumps their price by five hundred percent. Builders couldn't go back to the bank and say, hey, we need another two hundred thousand dollars for streetlights. They found the loophole of, well, let's just sell the lots first. Now the county policy says that we write sixty dollar check per lot to the county and then the county pays the rest of it. Take in. On a hundred lot subdivision, we take in six thousand dollars. And then we'd write a check to Georgia Power for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So we got six thousand dollars to a hundred and eighty thousand dollar job. This closes that loophole. Developers should be paying for what they're building and take over the maintenance of it, a district from here on out.
After the the new procedure was adopted last year, we. The developer already had a plot in, construction plans approved, and we let them use the previous policy. It was just anything new after that was so they could build it into their performance. We weren't catching them. Okay, this last item is for the purchase of vehicles and equipment. The first one is a tandem dump truck replacement for roads and bridges. For a total amount of one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, three hundred, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and five dollars from Peterbilt of Augusta via Sourcewell contract. This is a dump truck that was flipped a couple of months ago. It was trying to get around a curve. The driver lost control. The truck flipped over. This is going would be funded by risk management. This next item is a replacement excavator for roads and bridges. Yep.
Is insurance paying the cost?
Yes. If it's risk management, it's an insurance claim, but we're but we're self insured. So yes.
Driver okay?
He is okay now. That was one. I believe we sent you all a message on that driver when that incident happened and we were a little concerned about him, but he's okay now.
The next item is a replacement excavator for roads and bridges and total amount of seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and eighty-eight cent from. Birmere, Birmingham, southeast via F S A contract. This is a replacement of a twenty thirteen case. Which fleet recommends being repurposed to the recycling center. This was all approved with the current budget. Including repurposing this one to recycling center. This is. The current excavator isn't failing. It is older. It is smaller than what we need. It's becoming more sluggish, so we would like to replace it with this newer. Little bit larger to be more commensurate with our workload. Escavator and repurpose the other one to the recycling center.
It is Rosen Bridges already owned. How many was so how many?
One mini excavator, yep. Have a larger case at the landfill.
This is of different excavators, but they're all different sizes. How many excavators do we own?
Yeah.
I don't know. Nick, how many do we have? We got a lot. We have a lot, but. Got to keep in mind, we've got a lot of crews and if we're all sharing with the same excavator, one crew's not working. Is a replacement piece of.
I always wanted to understand how many we already own and. How are what ways I'm sure that all all being used at once, how can we work to. Not buy one and use equipment we already have.
The road and bridges has eighty plus people and they have, you know, several different crews. They have several right of way mowing crews, several gateway mowing crews. They have a special projects crew. That's where this. Mini excavator lives and it is always in use. It's always with them. It's their it's their their monkey wrench on job sites. They can use it for just about anything, escalating to gradings, whatever.
Bonnie.
I don't. Do they?
They do. The recycle center gets hand me downs and the one they have is, I think, is it the one that broke the pin or did you replace that one? Yeah, so that so they don't have it now because we had to get rid of it. So yeah, recycle gets the hand me downs.
They did request one in the budget and we denied that in the budget and decided that we were going to use it for the for the. Primary use of Rosen Bridges and pass one down again because they don't use it near as.
And then the last is a replacement track later for stormwater for a total amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars from Bobcat of Augusta via Sourcewell contract. Fleet recommends replacing the Bobcat, which currently needs more than forty thousand repairs when compared to. Current market value of what a new one costs versus what it's going to cost to buy this forty thousand plus in replacement parts and the labor. It doesn't make a lot of sense financially. Apparently, the hydraulic system failed in this and then basically shrapnel throughout the entire hydraulic system. So it's. Completely hydraulic system is completely shot in it. So fleet recommends replacing this one as well. So. Just to recap, the the dump truck would be replaced via risk management, insurance, roads and bridges. Be their escalator would be replaced through the budget and then the stormwater track later would be replaced to the stormwater fund.
What are we doing with the whole one? Still surplus this one. Second.
Do we have any legal matters? After four.
Yes, sir. I have the year to date budget report and the water and sewer construction project reports for your review and happy to answer any questions you may have.
I know it noticed the estimated completion date for. First made to Uchi Creek twenty-sixth. That complete?
Look at that real quick. I'm in.
Six eight six. Project six eight.
Okay. Find my. My page. No, that's supposed to be. Twenty twenty-six. That's that was a typo there. U V project, we had our final walkthrough last week and we. Punch list items. They're supposed to have their punch list items done by the end of September. We're still having issues with side A at Blanchard. Clark's Hill works is working well. Blanchard side B is working well, but side A is still having a failure in the U V cabinet. They told us last week at our weekly meeting that it would be down the third week of September, I believe it is, to repair that. We told them we didn't feel that was acceptable. Get them down here sooner. Haven't heard back from that if they're able to come sooner or not. But by the end of September, everything should be in working order based on our last meeting.
Don't pay the last one six, one point seven million. Matter of fact, I'd prefer the the board of commissioners vote on that pavement.
Yep.
Board's working on that.
We're working on that. The last we calculated, we're a little based on what time extensions they were rightfully due. We're at about a hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars in liquidated damages at this point.
I'm looking at one point seven million.
Oh, I know.
As long as it's taken them to finish the project, just make sure it take that long to finish.
Yes, sir.
Although it's a great product. Only in office two and a half more years. Would like you to.
Yes, sir.
I don't have any other questions.
I don't either.
Yes, we have the roadway projects report and the roadway resurfacing report for your review. Answer any questions.
I had two questions. I know we were expecting. Done for highway two twenty-one.
It is a part of the Clary Cut project, so it's being done with that project. We just started. We just had the kickoff. That's going to be a fairly large project. Had the kickoff meeting conceptual design development phase. So we expect, if I can look at the contract, but I believe it's two to three months before we have that concept ready.
There's something we were expecting on that. I guess that was the kickoff meeting. And then I noticed there was a meeting on the. Wanted an update on that.
So the meeting on the greenway in August was for the Tia two, all remaining phases and it like similarly it is for the it was for the kickoff of the concept phase. So. Identifying where that you know generally what corridors it's going to go down, but exactly what side the road, you know, where it's going to cross over so we can identify survey limits. We're developing a concept that we can bring a survey, a proposal or receive a survey and design proposal from the firm that we would bring back to you. Going back to the original, the Clary Cuts probably a year into buying a project. It's going to be a long one. And if C S X allows us to certify the right of way, but we hope to let it in the next month. Rich.
I'm just glad they're your people. Oh, yes.
It'll be so nice when it's done.
I heard that somewhere. I heard that somewhere.
Any public comment?
Mr. Chairman, just in just in the way of a reminder, this today will be the last day for a meeting like this. We'll be able to use this store. Hopefully, Mr. Blumenthal and his crew with McKnight's going to get started in this parking lot soon. So we're going to be there's fencing pulling up as we're talking. This door will be blocked off. We'll have signage and we'll start using this store to access this this auditorium going forward. I just want to make that announcement.
We have two. I'm a motion to move to the full board.
Second.